Six o'clock, I'll call the September the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Richie Johnson from the First Church of Withfield to provide an invocation. If you would please rise and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Johnson?
Good evening, everybody. If you bow your head and close your eyes. Father, in the name of Jesus, I thank you for what you're going to do in this meeting. I thank you for our wonderful leaders. I thank you for the citizens of this community. Lord, I pray your blessing upon us. I pray that you would bring your success to us, bring your prosperity to us. You're going to do great things in With County. Lord, you're going to allow this county to be a beacon in all of southwest Virginia. And Lord, may your grace be with us and rest upon us and shine upon us. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will note for the record, we do have a quorum with Supervisor Terry and Chair Lawson absent. Also, bear with us, we're trying out some new microphones, so maybe a little technical difficulties. All right, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing. I'll read the public hearing notice. Notice is given that the Board of Supervisors of With County, Virginia, will hold a public hearing on the proposed issuance at one time, or from time to time, of bonds by With County. The estimated maximum amount of the bonds proposed to be issued is eight hundred thousand dollars. The proposed use of the bond proceeds at the pay cost of acquiring fire trucks and an incident command trailer and to pay cost of issuing the bonds. The public hearing, which may be continued or adjourned, and at which persons may appear and present their views on the proposed bond issues, will be held at six P.M. or soon thereafter as the matter may be heard on September the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, before the board in the boardroom of the County Administration Building located at three forty South Sixth Street in Withfield, Virginia. With that, we don't have anybody, any citizen, signed up to speak for the public hearing on the proposed issuance of the bonds. Mr. Baer, would you like to summarize what we're doing here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the eight hundred thousand dollars that'll be used for the three fire trucks and the incident command vehicle. We placed out advertisement for bids. BB&amp;T Truist Bank now is the low bid at a rate of one point four four percent.
I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Baer, do we need to take any action on that at this time?
I would request that the board approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of the general obligation bond of With County in a principal amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand and the execution and delivery of certain bond documents in connection with the bond.
So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mr. Horni. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is Citizens Time. We have two people signed up. The first one is Mr. Zach Lester.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, I am Zach Lester, and I've got a packet of papers for everybody. It's got a little bit of information and a little notice as well. I did the same thing at the school board last week, a school board meeting, and next week, I'm hoping to do the same thing at the health department. So I'm just going to read this first sheet, and then the rest of the packets, it's just going to be stuff for y'all to go through over the next week or so. It's just going to have links to a bunch of different stuff, a bunch of different doctors. I think there's over thirty studies by the NIH and the CDC denouncing masks. The ultimate goal is to get the option of masks in school taken away or given so that we can get our kids out of the mask. We're offering some ways to get them out with the upgrade of HVAC system to the highway fare. I have everything credential, professionals going over all the information. None of my opinion. This is all facts cited and researched. So I'm going to just read this real quick. Dear everybody, under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act two point two dash thirty-seven hundred dash two point two dash thirty-seven fourteen and the Virginia Public Records Act forty-two point one dash eighty-six, essential public records, I am requesting an opportunity to inspect or obtain copies of public records that describe documentary evidence of the specific contagious disease that the Department of Health claims to exist. Documentary evidence, including evidence demonstrating by modern scientific standards that this disease has been isolated and purified and not extrapolated from any computer or mathematical model. Documentary evidence that such disease is in fact contagious and has been proven by modern scientific standards to be contagious between people. Quantitative and comprehensive report of all physicians' affidavits having been filed with the local health officer diagnosing people with having such contagious disease. All records demonstrating that the local public health officer has petitioned the court and has obtained a court order based upon such physicians' affidavits imposing health control measures such as isolation and quarantine and describing which people or groups of people the orders imposed upon. If there are any fees for searching or copying these records, please inform me if the cost will exceed twenty dollars. However, I would also like to request a waiver of all fees in that the disclosure of the requested information is in the public interest and will contribute significantly to the public's understanding of basic human rights. This information is not being sought for commercial purposes. The law requires that you respond to and fulfill this request as promptly as possible. If you expect a significant delay in responding to and fulfilling this request, please contact me with information about when I might expect copies or the ability to inspect the requested records. If you deny any or all of this request, please cite each specific exemption you feel justifies your refusal. To release the information, notify me of the field procedures available to me under the law. Thank you for considering my request. It's got all my information, email, phone number, my address. It's all listed there. Everybody take a copy, go over it over the next week. I'd love to hear from you about your opinions. I kind of know where everybody stands on this. The biggest thing is that we have to push the health department to take away the restriction. We're locking our children in masks for eight hours a day. There's doctors all over the world that are saying this is really, really bad for their neurological development and for their physiological health and all kinds of stuff. We just need to look at the science, not the political agenda, and try to do what's right for our kids. I think everything should be an option. The vaccine should be an option, the mask should be an option. We should all have that options. This is America. So I'd just like for y'all to stand behind us as we're going to the health department to try to make some stuff happen. Okay? Thank you all for everything you do. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. If you just want to give it to Mr. Baer, he'll... I don't want it to get lost with everything we've got up here. Next person we have signed up to speak is Ms. Linda Myers, Ms. Myers.
Good evening, gentlemen. As you know, I had an interest in some very smutty books that are in our school system. And I went to the school board meeting last week, and I asked them if they had looked at the books and what was their determination. And they acquiesced to Mr. Jeffries, and they told me that I had to file a KLB-dash-E form with the information on it. Okay, so what I have done, I've got the form, I've printed it off with the information, I've also attached a copy of the list of the books in the With County school system and the other, all forty-four books that we are opposed to having here in our system. So I'd like to give these to you, and I hope that you will take them, fill it out, mail it back. The address is on the back and so on. We will be doing a petition campaign through all the PTAs and the churches and so on and so forth in With County and private individuals, and hopefully, we can have these pornographic books taken out of our school system. So.
Just give it to me, and I'll get to it.
Okay. There they are. And then, the other thing was, what's cooking with the tobacco or the cigarette tax? I heard the other day that it's up to four dollars a carton in addition to its current and that you guys had approved. I went back through the agendas, and I couldn't find anything concerning the cigarette tax. There are several counties that are not in favor of this tax. I'm not in favor of people smoking, but to add an additional four dollars per carton tax on them, is it really worth it? And so on. It's kind of an unfortunate thing. So I wish you'd think about that again and get to the commission concerning the cigarette tax that they want to impose. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. That's all we had signed up for Citizens Time, so I'll close Citizens Time. The next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to...
They get much.
Pay the invoices. I have a motion by Mr. McRoberts. Do I have a second?
I can.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any invoice that any board member wants to pull out and/or discuss? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from August the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni. Is there any questions, discussion, or corrections to the minutes as presented? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is old business. First item under old business is the capital improvement plan. Mr. Baer, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Hankins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is something that you've had the chance to look at a couple of times now. We've made some corrections to it along the way. Now, we have a time deadline, though. We have to include our capital improvement plan documenting the need for the revenue sharing roads. That application has to be into VDOT by October first, so we would ask that, if it's the pleasure of the board, that you adopt the capital improvement plan. This does not obligate you to spending these amounts. These amounts are our best estimates that we've gotten along the way, or some of them are bid costs. You can always change this later if you need to. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have, but we would ask that you approve that the plan is presented.
I'll open the floor up for any discussion on the capital improvement plan. Open the floor up for a motion to approve. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Horni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion about the capital improvement plan? I'll just say, Mr. Hankins and Mr. Baer as well, I appreciate how y'all put this together. I think that... I know we've said it before, but the way y'all are putting pictures with the roofs and everything, I think it really drives the expectancy of some of these projects home.
Certainly expect it to help you make your decisions.
Does anybody else have any discussion or question? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved. Anything else under old business, Mr. Baer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, Ms. Brittany Childress?
Yes.
That's correct, right?
Yeah.
Attended the meeting and presented her request to you all. As indicated, we had taken Ms. Childress to court for non-payment of a water bill. Judge Mabe did... She did request from Judge Mabe the exception that it was allowed by ninety-seven point one, that the board could grant an exception to the mandatory connection. I have provided you all by email earlier today and then also a copy in front of you, just the history of the account since August of two thousand eighteen, when the billing was first set up. The site, I have visited the site myself, looked at the site, and do not find any physical characteristics that prevent the site from being able to connect to the water. So, and at this time, I do not know if it's been a desire to connect, but it just did not pay the non-user fee at this time. Staff's recommendation would be to deny Ms. Childress's request for an exception to the mandatory connection.
Ms. Childress, I believe the question last time was if you'd got a written quote. Have you gotten that?
Yes, sir. I just have one copy. Do the... And that was from R and R.
And this was, I can talk with Mr. Chris, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight. That was the quote that they said, based on if there were rock or anything there in the process. Did they come back out and take another look at the project or look at the rock?
No, that was just out, that was back in April, I believe, the quote that he provided me back in April. I mean, but there is rock, it's a rock bed, but it was just, I guess, his estimate, his quote, on what it would cost to go under the creek up to the house.
There was one thing, though, I didn't really understand. What's the concrete bar in under the creek bed?
I am no engineer on water lines. I can tell you what was explained to me, and it was a concrete holding housing to go underneath the creek bed. I don't know any more than that. Like I said, I'm an accountant. I sit in an office and play with numbers all day. So I'm not sure why he suggested that, except that it would be a housing to protect the water line underneath the creek to go up to the house.
Do you know that, or that, Steve?
I do not, no.
Well, the original recommendation from the Water Committee was to deny the request, so it doesn't need a second. I'll open the floor for any discussion.
Well, I think, going back to Mr. McRoberts's question, I think at our last meeting, we asked Mr. Chris about that. It was determined that the creek bed was, you were able to go through it with a plow or a trencher, so we should, there wasn't no need for the concrete.
You'd have to go under it.
From what we talked about.
You'd have to go under it, right? You couldn't just like...
I mean, it would be in the creek bed, but yes, it's...
You'd have to dig under the creek bed.
But would it have to be, I mean, it wouldn't have to be bored, would it? I mean, wouldn't they just dig it out and lay the line and cover it back up?
And that was the question that we had asked last time. Because I think, I think some of the confusion was, for me personally, around the concrete was if they bored under it. And that was one of the questions, I think, especially after seeing the pictures that brought the question up.
It's a dry creek bed, right, man? It's a dry, weather creek. Is there any more questions or discussion? Again, we tabled the original recommendation from the Water Committee that was to reject it. So it doesn't need a second.
So just for clarification, we're voting to deny, correct?
That was the recommendation that we took.
Okay.
That is correct. Does that elicit any more questions? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
No.
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 No. No. No. No. No.
I appreciate you guys listening.
Thank you.
Anything else under old business, Mr. Chairman?
Just for clarification, you all voted not to grant a waiver to that, right?
Correct.
You all are granting her...
Was that your understanding?
I thought it was the other way. I thought we were voting not to... The motion from the...
We denied the request.
But the motion from the Water Department was to deny the request. So if we voted no, then that meant that we were voting it down.
Sorry. I ain't driving children somewhere.
Come on, let's... Give us just a second. We're trying to work out a technical issue.
Yeah, fine, yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Horni.
My thought was that we were, the motion from the Water Department was to deny the claim. So if we voted yes, then we were going to deny the claim. If we voted no, we would not vote to deny it.
May take. That's what I understood.
That's what I understood.
My recommendation would be, because everyone voted the same way, is a motion to reconsider what just happened to clarify the position of the board. That the, and then make a new motion and have a second to say, the motion, the motion to reconsider is because there was a misunderstanding of how it was came from the committee. So I'm doing a motion to reconsider because the recommendation from the committee was to deny the request. So the motion would have been, we move to deny the request. And then that vote, who voted yes, if you chose to deny the request, right?
That's what I took it as.
Okay. If I voted no?
If we voted no, then that meant that we were going to give her the request.
I guess for clarification, is your vote no, meaning yes, you want to grant a waiver to her being required to connect?
So the minutes from the last meeting said Supervisor Horni made a motion as recommended by the Water Committee to deny Brittany's request for a waiver for that.
Right.
The motion was to deny the claim.
So if we voted no, then it was, if we wanted to deny the request, we voted, we're supposed to vote yes.
That's the way I took it.
I think so. So everyone voted no, meaning the board's going to grant the request?
That's the way I took it.
I thought the way the board was talking, everyone was denying the request.
Just make motion to reconsider.
Well, I mean, I'm fine with it the way it went.
Well, I think...
Basically, you're going to deny, basically, you're going to give her the request, and she won't have to pay it and won't have to connect.
I mean, that was, that was my vote. I don't know what y'all were... Is that the way y'all understood?
Maybe.
So, based on the board, all I want, just for clarification, that's, and thank you so much. The board has agreed to grant her request for a waiver, which means it'll go back to the judge and say, the board agreed to grant a request, and she will not need to pay any outstanding bill or the monthly fee in the future.
That was, that was my vote.
That's, that's not...
All right.
I mean, that's what I thought, that's where I was at.
Okay. Well, as long as there's...
Okay.
Out of five of us, as long as there was four, it was true. You understand what happened, correct?
That you guys granted the request.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
It's clear as mud.
Yep. We sure do appreciate it, you guys.
We do, thank y'all.
We really do.
Thanks for the work y'all do.
Thank y'all.
All right, have a good one.
Anything else under old business, Mr. Baer?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to new business, we have the Barrett Mill Road Water Project Funding Resolution.
Yes, as you all know, you all approved us to make application for the Barrett Mill Project at a recent meeting of Board Supervisors. Rule development does require that in order for us to seek financial assistance to them, that the board pass the resolution that you see attached right there, basically for us to apply for the Barrett Mill Water Project.
Entertain a motion to, I guess...
Adopt this resolution.
Adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved. Next item is the regional housing study letter of support, and Mr. Baer?
Yes, the Mount Rogers PDC has been working on developing a regional housing study. They are applying for some study grants, and they have requested three thousand dollars in matching funds from all of the counties within the Mount Rogers area. It's my understanding that every county has committed to providing this funding for regional housing study. My request is that the board authorize me to sign this letter committing us to three thousand dollars towards this study. Certainly, as we have discussed, housing is an issue, and we think this study would be beneficial.
Entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Baer to sign and send the letter of support. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts. Have a second by Mr. Horni. Is that correct?
That is.
Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Horni.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved. And I will say that Mount Rogers, I'm not sure if it fell through the cracks, but I think we're the last ones to do...
I started to go ahead and sign the letter and send it on into them immediately, but I thought I'd go ahead and give it to you all to make certain, but I knew that it had your all's support with the housing issues that are in our area.
Anything else under new business, Mr. Baer?
Do have a couple of items that have been handed out. First one, I'd like to start with a memo regarding non-residential solar fee schedule. County engineer, building official have been working with me. We have been reviewing solar rates throughout the state. On the second page, you see some of the options that we've come across in other localities based on the cost on the project, based on the scale value of the project, based on the acres on the site. After reviewing, after looking at what Palatine County and a few other counties have done, we recommend going with a fee schedule based on the square footage of the solar panels. One, it makes it very easy to calculate. It's easy to go out in the field, base the number of panels that are going up across the property, and charge it off of that. You see some estimates there of amounts that may be raised based on the estimated cost of five hundred thousand per megawatt. Staff's recommendation is that we proceed with a base price based on the square footage of the solar panels.
And just to clarify, that is non-residential. This is not if somebody...
Correct.
...puts solar panels up at their house.
This is, this is commercial-based, non-residential solar.
You just, you had to have a public hearing, huh?
No, this is just establishing for our fee schedule.
Entertain a motion to adopt the fee schedule at five cents a square foot as presented. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on this? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
You have a memo from the treasurer that I received today. She requested if we adopt the resolution for the PPTR relief at either this meeting or the September twenty-eighth meeting. Ms. Collins quickly prepared the required resolution that you see attached. As you all are familiar with, this is basically, we take the one point, five million dollars that we get from the state and divide that out to everyone so they can get their equal share of the personal property relief. And this year, it calculates out to thirty-three point thirty-nine percent. If the board would so like, we could go ahead and entertain this resolution tonight, and the commission and treasurer can go ahead and proceed with finalizing everything for their bills.
Open the floor for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion? Yeah, just like I do about every year when we do this. I thought we had a governor one time at Sydney. He was going to do a wave of color tax. Whatever happened to that?
That's where it got changed a couple of years later and one point five million is what we get. That's it.
I just like to remind people. Is there any more questions or discussions? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. I'm sorry, I'm used to having more eyes. It's through the timing, y'all.
The next one, I don't know if, Mr. Hankins, do you want to take this one or does that matter?
Sure. As, uh, you all know, the General Assembly threw us a, a curve ball intentionally or unintentionally earlier in the year when they, uh, required that we had to pay overtime, uh, rather than use compensatory leave. Uh, the, this, uh, policy that you have in front of you, uh, recognizes that the General Assembly has at least corrected for now, e- even though they have to take further action on it, uh, after the new General Assembly convenes in, in, uh, the winter. Uh, this policy is part of an overall policy, uh, overall, uh, overhaul that, uh, Mr. Barrett and I are, uh, working on. Uh, but this establishes a new overtime and compensatory leave policy, uh, retroactive to September first. Uh, we would restore ourselves to the, the Fair Labor Standards Act, whi- which, um, i- is federal policy. And, uh, we, we would, uh, return to giving folks the option to be, uh, able to use compensatory leave rather than be paid overtime. Be glad to answer any questions you've got.
So we're going back to what we used to?
Yep, more or less, yes, sir.
That was well worded when describing what the General Assembly did.
I, I was tackled.
Very tackled. Entertain a motion to, uh, adopt the overtime and comp leave policy as presented. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved.
Sorry. I'm handing out one more item at the end of the week. Last week, uh, we got word from Rural Development. They were closing out our Ricky Road Water Project and due to some turnover in their staff, uh, they, uh, had not sent us, uh, a bill for some payments that we owed. Um, and that they were going to go ahead and, as we had discussed with them, send us, uh, the full drawdown of the remaining amounts that were not needed for construction, which was twenty-eight thousand ninety dollars and thirty-six cents. Uh, this amount will turn around and be paid back to them. So we go ahead and take care of some of our payments towards that. Uh, just, it would help us knock off a few payments at the end of this, the, uh, forty-year payment in the future. I would request, in order for us to issue these payments to Rural Development, the bond payments and the, uh, payoff amount, uh, with this twenty-eight thousand, we need to, uh, amend and appropriate that into the water department budget. And I would request the amendment appropriation of the amount twenty-eight thousand ninety dollars and thirty-six cents as shown.
Open the floor up for a motion.
So move.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. Anything else, Mr. Barrett? No, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Sheriff Foster, we, before we move into board reports, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, thank you, speaking for the listeners. I like Mr. Hankins. We must be wearing the same mitt because I got to throw one of those curve balls about two weeks ago myself from the General Assembly. Uh, they passed legislation to fund, comp board funded, deputy sheriff's a three thousand dollar stipend in light of the pandemic. And those monies would be awarded and paid out to those who are in comp board positions. I like other sheriffs in the state and is in somewhat of a unique position because the county here and like other counties around us, the, the county's gracious enough to give me comp board, uh, county funded positions. So light of that, and that being said, I've got nine full-time positions that are funded by you all. And the county won't qualify, or the comp board won't qualify that benefit or afford them that same benefit because they're county funded, which makes no sense to me. But I'd respect the request that those officers receive the fe- same funding as the comp board funds. There's nine of them total. Uh, they perform the same job, they have the same responsibilities as the comp board funded deputy sheriff. And those nine, of those nine, three of those have con- has contracted the coronavirus. They have recovered. I've got another officer today that tested positive and I've got another officer that's in limbo right now. I don't know. I hadn't got his results back. So, I didn't know if we had any existing funds left from the coronavirus that was afforded to the localities or not. If so, I was just going to come up here and ask for your consideration, if so, to fund the remaining deputies, what's been afforded to the comp board positions. Like I said, I've got a tow of nine and, uh, I'll give Mr. Barrett a copy of those. The ones outlined in yellow are the ones that are actually contracted. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Barrett, um, Mr. Hankins just confirmed with me there, we do, with what we applying towards the trailer, um, we should have about thirty-three thousand dollars remaining. Um, that, that, uh, twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, in fact, if you go to page one twenty-three of your package, that shows, um, our latest calculations for our CARES Act balance, uh, after we pay for the, um, trailer. So we have about thirty-three thousand. So, uh, the board would need to, uh, take action to approve that as, um, CARES Act funding, uh, to pay that stipend for those nine officers.
Of course, I'm, I'm conflicted out, so I'll, I'll just open the floor. Y'all do what you want to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion. To take it out of the CARES Act, what's left there. Honey, did you just discuss, Mr. Barrett?
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
Aye. So approved. Sorry, I was counting on the core. It's not right when we don't have everybody here.
I was just surprised you counted four.
That's why it took me a moment. All right, next item on the agenda. Anything else under new business, Mr. Hankins, Mr. Barrett?
No.
I've got a couple of informational items, but they can come wherever you want them to.
Go ahead.
Today, we submitted the, uh, uh, grant application for the Virginia Telecommunications Infrastructure, uh, Program, the VADI, uh, program for broadband. Uh, those applications were due today. The state has been saying consistently that they expect to make an award on those in January. Um, but today they told Elizabeth after she submitted all of the, uh, well, it was a narrative and, uh, around twenty attachments that had to go with it. Uh, most of them prepared by our, our partner in this application. Uh, but they, they've indicated now they may be able to make awards in December rather than January. So we, we may know sooner than later. Um, but, um, we're, we're happy that that grant went in. We're, uh, she's also, uh, tomorrow submitting about a, a hundred thousand dollar grant for, um, the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund to be able to get our, uh, dispatchers trained in emergency medical dispatch, uh, to, to meet state, uh, requirements on that. Um, and, and the last one is, is more of a, a PSA since we know that folks, uh, watch on, on television. Um, this last weekend, uh, or late last week, we had our animal, uh, shelter, uh, announce on Facebook that they had five dogs that were endangered and, um, you know, could be, uh, put down if, uh, housing wasn't made available to them, if, if they weren't placed and, and found owners. Uh, that got a lot of attention and we, we had, uh, a number of animals adopted, uh, th- this last weekend. But we also got some fairly negative responses on Facebook. Um, you know, this thing, you know, sort of gets shared around and people in other states see it. Uh, and, and they, they either think that our animal shelter folks are, are monsters who want to put dogs down or that they are, uh, bad people who don't want to look after the animals that we have. The fact of the matter is that the pandemic has accelerated. Uh, you, if you remember back to this time last year, people were adopting dogs left and right because they were staying at home and they were able to spend some time, uh, with those animals. Since then, as people have started heading back to, to work, uh, the number of, um, owner surrenders has really picked up. So we're having people who, you know, are, are turning dogs back in because either they don't have the time or the ability to, to, uh, take care of them. So, uh, just for those folks who are watching, we, we would encourage, you know, treat our, our animal control folks with some re- respect. They, they really have a hard job. Uh, they, they, they have a lot of, uh, bad situations that they go into. Um, and I just want to recognize that they, they did a good job this weekend in getting the word out that, uh, we needed animals to be adopted. It's been nearly five years since we had to put, uh, put a dog down, uh, that wasn't a, a court ordered euthanasia. Uh, so, um, you know, they, they've been doing a good job for a long time now. We want to see them continue to do that and get public support. But, uh, you know, i- if, if you adopted a dog during the, the pandemic, you know, hang on to that dog, you know, tr- treat that dog right. You know, give it that, that home that you thought, thought you were going to give. So, I'll get off my soapbox, but thought that needed to be said.
And, and I'll just say, you know, follow up with what you said about been five years since they, they put a dog down. You know, they also have a group of volunteers that they work with that, that do tremendous work getting these dogs adopted. Um, I'm, you know, it's, it's not a secret to anybody sitting up here. I'm a dog person. I lost mine a couple of months ago. And that's the last thing anybody wants to do, is put a dog to sleep. But, uh, they, they do do a good job. I'll get off the soapbox. I'll get started and. Anything else, Mr. Hankins?
No, sir.
All right, moving on to board, or, I'm sorry, I lost my spot. Board reports, Budget Committee.
Budget Committee met on September eighth, two thousand twenty-one and makes the following recommendations. Approve, approving a budget amendment in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and three dollars for the Library of Virginia grant received by the clerk of cert court, account two one zero six dash four six one five two five.
Mr. Barrett, you want to explain that one?
Basically, it's just sort of self-explanatory. It's, uh, the, um, the funds were received, um, as you can see by the EDI remittance there. Uh, just need to amend that to, uh, Mr. Mustard's budget so he can use those funds.
Coming from committee, does it need a second? Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Approving the transfer of three hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cent and to amend and appropriate the same to the Commonwealth Attorney's Budget, two one oh six dash four six one one zero zero, to cover shredding cost.
I think that one's pretty self-explanatory. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Accepting revised bid for the instant command trailer in the amount of eighty-six thousand one hundred dollars, which forty-one thousand one hundred dollars from CARES Act fund.
Mr. Hankins, do you want to explain that one?
Yes, sir. The, uh, the bid that we received was, um, a, a solicited bid. So when we were looking for bids for this trailer, we, we advertised for bids and we also solicited from, uh, manufacturers. Uh, the, the bid that we received was for a trailer that was on a lot and that trailer sold, uh, before we accepted, uh, the bid. Um, the, the cost to replace it is, um, the eighty-six thousand, uh, that you see there. I, I, I've got some heartburn over that, but I, I also understand it from the, the maker's perspective. Um, we're still going to be over fifty thousand dollars less than the, uh, the second bid. Um, and, uh, staff has recommended and the Budget Committee has recommended that the, uh, county proceed with the, the purchase using, um, the combination of funds from the, uh, the bond that you've just approved, uh, and, uh, just over forty-one thousand dollars from the, uh, CARES Act funds.
Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Hankins? Any discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from the Budget Committee? Is that it?
No, sir, no, sir.
Board of Supervisors time. Mr. Horni?
Uh, don't believe I have anything at this time.
Mr. McCrawberts?
Yeah, I have something I want to say. Uh, the, uh, I think it was Labor Day weekend, we had to call and put our firemen out in the river, in which they didn't make it. Yeah, we put them boys out in them old boats. They ain't a bit safe. I think we need to look into the possibility of buying them a boat that is safe for them to use in that old rocky river down there. Them boys has got twenty thousand dollars saved up to pay on that. And it, it's fifty thousand. But it takes a year to get it. So if we should order it now, it'll be a year before we get it. But I think that would help, help them and all agencies would be able to use that boat.
Talking about like a rescue boat?
Yeah, yeah, it's a rock, called a rock boat. It's got a big piece of steel on the bottom of it. Hit a rock, it go. You hit a rock and it'll, and then it'll go looming and knock a hole in it. You're going somewhere.
Can we refer that to Fair and Rescue Committee and get some information on that?
That's, that, you, that's family. I just want to bring it up.
Anything else, Mr. McCrawberts?
No, I don't, no, thank you.
Mr. Cook?
Uh, the only thing I have, we already covered it when we voted to, uh, give that lady the exemption. We did, uh, at the last meeting, we basically were going to do that if she brought in the, uh, estimate for the five thousand dollars. So, I mean, we don't want to make that the precedence. Um, it was because she brought in the, the, uh, estimate from R and R. It wasn't because she didn't pay her bill. Other than that, I haven't anything else to say.
Before I recognize the general fork chisel, I'd just like to say, Mr. Smith, you look dapper in that Roy Tret orange necktie.
Just for the record, the odd orange hasn't looked that good in a long time. I will say.
I will say, I will stand up so everybody knows that I've honored my, my word. I, I am wearing black and orange. Congratulations to the Roy Tret Indians for taking care of my pioneers. Couple Friday nights back, three weeks now, I think it is. And I bet with Mr. Vol, uh, Mr. Vol, uh, I had to wear the colors, so I'm holding up my ancestors' deal. I will be taking this tie off as soon as we go into closed session.
And where'd you get the tie?
As well. I had to borrow it from Mr. Vol.
I, I bought the tie.
Oh, so you bought it so you can have it?
No, I bought it. Yes, sir, you can wear it. He's tired. I wasn't going to ask him to buy it.
The only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is, um, ask the question about the volunteer or the paid part-time at Max Meadows. We hadn't heard of anything else in a while. Let's see what we stand with that.
We, we've, uh, been having some conversations about, um, how we're going to manage those folks. Um, Jimmy does have a draft job description for, uh, the part-time firefighters. Um, there, there's some other things that are, are coming up, but, uh, we've also worked up a memorandum of understanding that, that we'll meet with, um, uh, the chief to go over, uh, just outlining how the operations will work, uh, in this circumstance. Uh, we, we just haven't had a chance to sit down with him and meet yet.
The last thing I.
No, you, you don't see anything happening, but we're working on it.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I got, I know, and I'll reach out to the school board as well, but, um, as I spend a lot of time over at the high school in the evenings, there's a lot of people that's over there walking and running or whatever. There is a lot of complaints about vehicles on the track and comments has been made that that's an athletic track, not a track for automobiles. Uh, so I just want y'all to be aware in case y'all get those questions, but I'll reach out to the school board as well on that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, the only, I had one thing about the, I had people reach out about the youth league football schedule and Mr. Bear checked into it and apparently the, the town put out a.
A draft schedule that hasn't been approved.
A draft schedule that hadn't been approved. And basically they didn't have Ruritri Youth League playing any games at Ruritri and parents and grandparents a little upset and I can't say I blame them, but it was a, it was a mistake and not on the county record department side, but with another entity. And one more thing, early voting starts on the 17th, I believe. Did we ever get a court order over to Judge Showalter about the campaign signs?
An order has not been entered yet. The, no, no election sign.
I followed up Steven, I think this week or last week. We not seen an order yet. I didn't call Mr. Mustard to ask him about that. I could follow up.
My understanding was that Judge Showalter signs order he doesn't write over, was my understanding. If not, I'm putting a four before on the courthouse long. But that's all I've got. Uh, next item on the agenda is closed meeting under Code of Virginia, section point 2.2-3711A5, discussion of prospective industry project palm. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make it.
Say, have a motion by Mr. McCRoberts. Have a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session.
All right.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook to come out of closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. We're now back in open session on the record. Mr. McCRoberts, if you'll read the certification.
All right. Resolution. Certification to closed meeting, whereas the with county board of supervisors convening the closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative court vote and in accordance with provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where as section 2.23712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the with county board supervisor, such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved, the with county board supervisor hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law or discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution apply. And two, only such public business matters as will identify in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the with county board of supervisors and I make a motion we accept.
Have a motion by Mr. McCRoberts. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny.
Aye.
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 Anything else to come before the county, Mr. Bear?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Anybody else have anything? Here and now we'll be adjourned.